And refer back to Ms. Katie Cott.
In the interest of moving this thing along, there's seven people coming in and they only want to take five, six minutes for their presentation. I just want to ask just a few questions. You can jot them down, you can get back with me. I hope that you would get back with me, and I hope you would give me an opportunity to respond to the answers that I get. The next question I want to know is how much has the county money spent on the airport? How much county dollars have been spent? I want to know how much the total FAA has spent. I want to know if the new employee from the Marshals office at the airport is being put there due to the commercialization of that airport? And if that Tahoe is being purchased for the Marshals office, it only says it's for the new employee? If that is in fact the Tahoe that's going to be used at the airport? I reserve the right now to come back. Thank you very much.
Any other citizens wishing to speak?
I speak since I've been standing here for a while. Okay, you guys know me. I come when I disagree and I come.
Just say your name.
Oh, I'm Nancy Hollenshade.
And sign it.
And I'm here. My name is Nancy Hollenshade, and I come and I speak when I agree and when I disagree, and you guys know it. I was back here and first of all, I want to say your public safety dollars, your buyer bond, we have some of the best in this country represented us, and those are well-deserved dollars, and I just want to commend you for giving money to her because those are very well-deserved because we have some of the best people here. Anyway, I was here when you raised the miller trade, and I complained about raising the miller trade, and you guys said, "Well, we're doing it because of the assessments going down." But you also promised back then that when the assessments went down, you would roll the miller trade back.
That's what I just did.
And that's what I mean by that. That's what I was coming to say, and I saw that you guys did roll through that. So I'm here just to say thank you for keeping your word, and you know, when you keep your word, we citizens notice it, so I just want to say thank you for keeping your word. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
I just wanted to come up here and say I'm Carolyn Wright, President of Paulding Chamber, and since I've been here almost eight years, we have been working to get off of the county payroll of the IBA. It began at $120,000. We are now down to $50,000 this past year and will be $25,000 this year. We will be off that budget. I will not be putting that funding into our chamber board budget until after, in January. So we are working hard to, for our businesses, and I wanted y'all to know that. We appreciate what y'all are doing, but, and I hope that you see that we're giving a good service to our business community. The other thing is that I have many, many wonderful board members. They may not live here in Paulding, but they are vested here in Paulding. They bring businesses and jobs to Paulding, and that's why they sit on my board, because they are vested in Paulding County.
Thank you. Please state your name and sign it.
My name is Susan Palomack Sniff. I'm a resident and a homeowner, taxpayer of Paulding County. I've been here 21 years. I'm asking today to, for commissioners, to consider the budget money that's being allocated to the animal shelter to be used to save lives rather than kill pets. We have healthy pets in there, we have a system to save life, we have tax dollars. My tax dollars are going to be contributed. I would like to see things changed. There's new ways that, new systems that can be implemented that will save lives rather than take lives, and I think this is important. I think it's the wave of the future. I think if we use rescues and we use volunteers and we spend that money wisely, we can stop killing animals and possibly save money. I would like to see the county take this more seriously.
Thank you. My name is Ron Davis. Came this morning, came this morning out of a list of questions and concerns, and most of those have been addressed through the conversations that have been had this morning, but there are two others that I'd like to express. First, I know that we've had some tight years, and we've had to squeeze a little bit on the budget as the tax digest comes back and profit values rebound. We look to do some things that we've been putting off. The proposed budget for this year has about an almost 5.5% increase projected in revenues, has about an 8.5% increase in expenses, and I know that we've got to catch up on some stuff that's been done, but I think that a more conservative approach to expenditures is appropriate here. I would like to see, as we increase expenses, that we not allow increased expenses to outpace increased revenues. And then the second thing that I would like, I emailed my post commissioner, Mr. Carmichael, about this, and as of this morning, he didn't have an answer for this, so Mr. Chairman or maybe someone here can help. There is a, excuse me, there is an 83% increase in operating expenses for the Board of Elections, and I was wondering if we can get an explanation for what's driving that increase for those operating expenses.
The election that's going on today plus the election that will be held, the increase goes up and down based on where the election is. Like you have initial elections in next year, and we hold them, but they pay us to hold those elections in their election year. You'll see that amount go up and then go back down in the fall or so every other year. You'll sort of see that as.
So that's not an increase that would be expected to build.
It's actually less than what it was during presidential.
Thank you.
And you know there's not time limit, so you don't have to talk so fast that we can't understand you, okay?
Awesome. I'll still read. I didn't know that when I wrote what I had to say.
So you can read it slow.
I want to make sure I don't forget anything. My name is Mandy Brower. You guys may remember me from the seven or eight times that I previously stood before you. I stand now again to speak for those who cannot. The cats and dogs are Paulding Animal Control. For nearly two years, I've been coming before you to ask for lifesaving changes in animal control, and on the side, I've worked diligently to drive those changes. In the very beginning, I listed 11 steps that would transform Paulding County Animal Control from killing more than half the animals that came through the door to saving more than 90% of them. I came month after month to elaborate and teach no-kill and how it works, in hopes that you would hear the truth and the moral obligation of what I was trying to tell you. Like a person screaming fire in a burning building, I came reporting the kill rate and advising you of their needs. We asked for a foster care program, and when none was provided, we sought the help of rescues and we recruited fosters for them to save our pets. We asked for a trap neuter return program. We had an expert animal attorney flying from Washington DC to teach the community how TNR works. This program alone could save county dollars. Why would it not become a financial saver for the county instead of a spender? When no help was provided for TNR, we sourced traps and went out to teach and help do it ourselves. We asked for regular off-site adoption events. We planned to do ourselves, funded them, brought volunteers, and advertised to help make them a success. However, we were never granted regular adoption events because we were advised that there was not enough staff to cover events and the shelter. There were not funds for the rabies vaccines needed for these events, and the shelter could only be so full and not be used all of the available kennel space because there was not enough staff members to clean all of the kennels available. Highly treatable pets could not be treated because there was not funds for medicine, and the facility was inept for isolation. The reasons why not have been stacked and reiterated. The staff does the best they can, but they have limited resources and support. Despite the fact that we have not received help from you, we've saved lives. We've saved hundreds, probably thousands of lives, and I just wish she'd back that up. Volunteers have done this. When I say volunteers, I don't just mean official approved volunteers for shelter. I mean any of us that have done this on our own time and at our own expense. Rescues have chipped in from other counties and other states to help us. Fosters from here and from other counties as well have come to help us, and adopters have driven from such states as New York and Indiana to come and get these pets. Transports have gone to Maine, Kentucky, Tennessee, New Jersey, Connecticut, Virginia, just to name a few. Sponsors have come forward from all over this country and even Canada. Businesses have stepped forward to donate and help, and everywhere people are seeing what we're doing, and they want to help. We cut the kill rate 23% in 2013, and we are on track to substantially cut it again. But now I ask, what about you? What do you have planned in this 2015 budget to help the dogs and cats at Paulding Animal Control? You are the representative of our citizens. Do you plan to support us? An overview of the 2015 proposed budget is available online or by email, and as I review the proposed budget, I don't see additional staff on this budget. When there isn't enough staff for regular adoption events or to be able to clean extra kennels during busy or seasons, I can't help but notice that there are no funds designated for building improvements when we're told that sneezing cats have to be put down because there's not an appropriate isolation area to treat a highly treatable illness. Before you tell me that there's not any funds for these things at Paulding Animal Control, I will tell you this. The funds that you do not spend on extra staffing will be spent on killing and disposing of these cats and dogs because the pets will come regardless. Funds that you don't spend on preventative vaccines, preventative vaccines are really cheap, FDRCPs and kennel cough. The funds that aren't spent on these preventative vaccines or building improvements will be spent on killing and disposing because kennel cough and respiratory infections, once it's started airworm, it's going to come as surely as colds in a crowded school of children. And the sad irony of the situation is this. Who are we killing and disposing of? Paulding County consumers. We want business in Paulding County, dogs and cats that could visit our local vets, our boarders, and groomers, who would require food and supplies that could be bought in Paulding, thus multiplying the financial loss of the situation. So if the moral loss of what is currently happening hasn't hit home to us yet, let the financial loss weigh upon you as you consider the budget for next year and the positive changes that are possible for next year. Because I will challenge you that if you don't have the staff to get these pets adopted, rescued, and cared for appropriately, lives, not dead, and if you don't have the facility to meet their needs, then you don't have enough staff budgeted nor an appropriate facility, and you have to go back with your working budget. That's all. Thank you.
I have a real long last name. My name is Sandy Walkstetter. It's got four Ts. Everybody spells it with three, but. I wasn't planning to speak, but the more I've heard various speakers, the more I thought I just, I need to do this. I'm really a new resident of Paulding County. My husband and I moved here in November. We came from Norman, Oklahoma, and I was never really an OU fan, so it doesn't matter. I like where I live. I live kind of in an odd spot in Paulding County, in Bramlett Farms, and I guess that's at the way south part there in Powder Springs. Anyway, I've kind of gotten involved in our animal control, and I don't even remember how I did this, but I am currently fostering for a couple of different rescue organizations. I wish I could do more. And I'm, you know, I'm looking at our animal control here. I've been there several times. They've been very, very gracious, very nice when I've gone in to pick up a cat or a kitten. And I can't help but think back of where I came from, Norman, and I remember the animal control building there. Well, the citizens in Norman voted to spend some money to add on to their animal control facility, to make it better, to make it more healthy. That may be something that should be entertained in the future. I know it's not something that can be done right now. But I also remember how the animal control was when I first started getting involved in rescue there, and it's come a great, great distance. They do do off-site adoptions. They'll go up to the local pet store, and they do take employees. There's two employees that every other Saturday are there, and I know they work their time around, but they've got enough staff in order to do that. I don't know if you really realize the cost of euthanization as opposed to keeping that animal alive. There are people out there. TNR is so important. It's what's happening across the United States, and it's proven that it makes a difference, and that's the way to go. And I do hope that as I continue to live in Paulding County, I'm not moving again, that's it, one move is plenty for me, that I continue to see improvements and working with people like Mandy and some of the other rescues. I didn't know if I was going to get back into it, but I'm glad I am. I'm glad I can do it a little part if I can. So please, please consider helping a little more with the situation. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm going to get my address down.
We have had a new visitor come into room, Commissioner of Hurton County, Sandy Allen. Sandy, thank you for being here. Nice to have you as a guest. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on the budget?
My name is Kirsten Liberty. It's been a while, but it's good to see all of you once again. There's a couple of things, I wasn't going to speak today clearly, but there's just a couple of quick things I wanted to bring up. The first thing I wanted to say to Carolyn Wright about the chamber budget, I think it is awesome that they are trying to get off of county funds. Most of the other counties, they do not fund their chambers, and I think it's very important that our tax dollars go to something more important, maybe even the animal shelter like they've been mentioning or some other branch. I think the money that's being spent there should be spent elsewhere, so that's great for Carolyn. Thank you for doing that. The second thing I wanted to say was to Tommy about the homestead exemption. That was shocking to me to hear. I can't say that I'm sad about it. We live in an area where we can get a homestead exemption, and $10,000 would certainly make a difference, so I appreciate that actually being brought up, and I encourage you all to think about that and consider it, especially when other counties that don't have as many rural areas have an even higher homestead exemption. So do think about that. Couple of things. I won't stand up here and preach to you about the airport. That's clear by my little uniform here. You're well aware of where I stand on that issue. The only thing I would say is to carefully consider anything that's being said about changing up the airport authority and their funding and the way that that works. Our tax dollars are already being spent there in ways that they shouldn't be, and just be very careful and cautious about taking away or adding in authority or money anywhere in that board. As far as a couple of things for Forestar and the PRD, I just want to bring this back around as far as budgeting goes for things like this and having to vote on it. Be sure that you guys are asking your citizens about stuff like that. Do they want a PRD up there? I'm just asking. It's a question. Do you know David Burnett, Mr. Burnett? Do they want?
Yeah, there already is a PRD.
Do they want additional houses up there?
Yes.
And do you know what the benefit will be to the county from having those additional houses?
It will be more expensive housing, more of the property tax values.
Assuming they're all filled?
Yes.
I'm sorry, PRD is plain residential. Yeah, that's true. So assuming they're filled, that will bring in higher tax rates. And how many houses are they thinking of putting up there?
A couple of 123.
Houses, 123 houses are areas with the seniors.
Yes, a lot of recent.
A lot like what they have in Bentwater.
Blockberry Run.
Blockberry Run and all that kind of stuff. Okay, I just would encourage you to make sure that you speak to the citizens surrounding that area about what they want. And my point in coming up here to speak today, be sure all of you are actually listening to your citizens about what they want and what they don't want, and try to implement some of those things, as is obvious by the number of people that are here for animal control. Animals are important to the people in Paulding County, and they need more help. The library situation, that was news to me. I was not aware about the money that they were planning to allocate and not allocate to the libraries, but you know what? You know who uses the libraries a whole lot? The homeschoolers. We use the libraries a lot, and to hear that the book funding is cut is not a happy moment for us. And they look to us as moms to give them input, and when they can't get the books that they need from our input, that's a very disappointing moment for those libraries. So before y'all consider doing any of that, you need to remember who uses the libraries. Homeschoolers use them a lot. I would guess going in there that we're one of the highest users, and certainly we need updated materials in there.
What I propose is actually more than whatever's been.
I know, but just consider, before y'all do any changes on library funding or cutting or anything, y'all need to look at the number of books that are going into the libraries and who's actually using them and where that funding is coming from. The bottom line is here, we all feel, I think, like there's a lot of things in this budget that aren't very clear of where the usage is actually going, and in the past, I'm not saying anything about the future, in the past, a lot of monies have been allocated to areas that we would not be happy with them being allocated to. I think the reason Katie was up here and some of the other people taking up, I know you guys were frustrated with the amount of time, he was trying to clarify where some of that money was going that was upsetting people in the past budget, and it needs to be a respect issue. There needs to be respect between the citizens and the commissioners and the audience. These are valid questions that he was asking, and these are valid questions that all of us have, and it's not fair to be disrespected when we're up here trying to approach the commission, okay? I'm just saying. From my point of view, sitting there through this whole meeting, it's a respect thing too. Am I wrong, Tom?
I agree.
Yeah. Okay. That's all. That's all, just a couple of little things. I'm sure I could talk for 10 more hours, but I won't take up anybody's time.
Thank you, Brittany Cott. [applause]
Father Mayor Lake responded to one of your zoning issues. Yeah, it is, but with regard to citizen input, every, I know you're aware of this, but every citizen that adjoins that is sent something by mail, and then there is a public meeting, y'all attended and attended this one, where there's a public hearing on whether or not it's appropriate to rezone that piece of property that had already cleared the public hearing last month, and that's why I'm going to have this point of clarification be posted.
Thank you, Susan.
Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Say your name.
Susan Watkins. In defense of myself, I would like to respond to your comment about myself and the other plaintiffs being Delta's pawns. That could not be further from the truth. You know, first of all, who we're partnered with, quite frankly, is none of your business. That's our business, okay? That's beside the point. So I'm not going to even comment if it's Delta or not, but the thought that I would be a pawn to anyone, clearly your brother, Mayor Austin, did not tell you about the city council meeting that I attended four days after the news broke in October about the airport. He allowed me to stand up and speak at least 20 minutes about my opposition to the commercialization and even worse, the way it was handled. My parting words to him and to the entire room were, "I will do everything in my power to stop this." No, excuse me. I said, "Trust me. I will do everything in my power to stop this." Obviously, I was not taken seriously, and I was greatly underestimated. So I just want to clear that up for you and everyone else, that we are not pawns. It's a slap in the face to us and the other residents when you try to minimize our opposition, our anger, our fear with the way you've all handled business with this airport. So let's just be clear, none of us are pawns. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on the budget?
I want to talk about the budget. I want to talk about the sheriff's.
Miss Attam, just help.
Real quick, and I think everybody knows, I'm Kathy Helms. Everybody understands that I'm really upset that our sheriff's department is not going to get their training facility, and I would hope that we can find as much funds to help and get that building built for them because I think that we need to show our sheriff's department that we're ready. So that's, let's get that building built.
Chuck Ran, I spoke yesterday. What financial director can borrow if there is additional room needs or a crime?
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on the budget?
I do want to speak. My name is Javon Wafer. My name is Javon Wafer. I just want to speak and say, this is the person I've ever been to a commission meeting over an open session, and hearing about the budget and everything. I really think that for the money, I'm really appalled about we got the best fire safety commissioners here. I say that, I have special needs kids. I have one that's got a heartbeat defect. He's been to the hospital this past week. He is unstable at times, but he's also stable at times. So if you can grant, they have put our background to this community, and I'm glad we live so close to one, but people just don't think, there's a need for special needs. There may be more things going on in the school systems. I mean, they've gone on in the community, they need the involvement. I've got to scout here tonight, today, work members communication and citizenship merit badges. He's here for that reason. He is also autistic, and he's got Asperger's. High functioning, but he is considered special needs. Just want you to know that there are kids out here that need our help. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up. Dave Munter has been speaking on this quite long. Dave Munter has been speaking on this quite a long time. You can register your home, and if you have special needs, if you have Alzheimer, if you have asthma, if you have anything, you can let our 911 know that. And if there is an incident, they know exactly how to handle that incident. So if you'll register with us, that'll be.
How do I do that?
If you'll get with Dave Munter with 911, he'll tell you how.
Thank you.
And we'll make it a public service announcement, comes out all the time, now we do that. But it will really be.
They have been to my house. They know us very well. They know who we are.
Okay.
And they're sometimes embarrassed with us because when they come in, they know who we are, they know the conditions, like automatically, ambulance is already called, they're in my house within three minutes. I've lived close enough to the fire rescue on Red Row. But it's just remarkable how well we've got things going on with that, and I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on the budget? And I will close this public hearing, and thank you for your participation. Number two, discuss adding Sunday package alcohol sales for the unincorporated area of Pauling County to the November 4, 2014 general election. I've gotten a lot of calls to add this item to the November ballot. There was a way that you advertised that legislature changed, and we were unaware of that change. And so it got put on a ballot, but people felt like it wasn't a general election and not enough people had a say-so in that. So I asked to have this put out here for discussion, see if the board commissioners feels like it's something that we want to move forward to. So Mike, you want to add anything else to that?
I just, you're right. September of 2012, the last time we discussed it, and the change was it went from a 60-day application period to 90-day application period, and we were inside of that number. So we did hold an election, it was a special call election in March of 2013, very low voter turnout. This general election scheduled for November 4 will be the very first general election since we originally proposed this. This won't be enacted until tonight, but it was on here for y'all's discussion. If it's something you choose to do, the very last opportunity that the board commissioners have to make that decision will be at the August 12 Board Commissioners Meeting, three weeks from tonight. And if it's something that y'all want to entertain, we can board again, doesn't matter, but we can place it on the agenda for August 12.
That'll be our last opportunity if we want to hold November 4.
That's correct.
And, you know, right now, if you want to make your fingers known, if you don't, if you want to talk about it, and bring it back up on August 12. Is there something I want your input on, on whether you'd like this to be a valid question for the citizens?
If you would actually need to know in time to get any input on this, then I guess I'm sure.
Yeah. Number three, discuss amending Resolution Number 07-09 Resolution and Act of Moratorium on the Acceptance of Rezoning Applications for All Developmental Sewer Within the Sweetwater Drainage Basin. We have Mike Jones and Ann Luthman that'll be talking about this.
I will start. What you have in front of you, there are three exhibits. One of them is Exhibit A was, that's a graphical display of what the moratorium looked like in 2007 when it was enacted. It was enacted for the Sweetwater Drainage Basin. That moratorium said that you couldn't build homes in that basin because there was a limit to the sewer availability. If you look at Exhibit B, that area that you see in green, and I apologize to those who can't see this, but it's the upper reaches of Sweetwater Basin, and there is an existing treatment plant there, it's called the Upper Sweetwater Water Reuse Facility, and this area would drain to that plant. That plant today operates at about 10% of its design capacity, but it's about 50,000 gallons a day if they have a 20 gallon plant. This will affect zoning, and there's one ending now that we've held it. We have not allowed it to go toward the public area for the zoning, because of this moratorium in place. What we're asking you to do is go back and amend the service area to delete the streams that. If you do that, Exhibit C will be what the new area will look like. And that will allow community development to process any zoning requests or rezoning requests that come in in that red shaded area. It was a good idea in 2007, there was a lot of development come in, there was a lot of rezonings that came in, and that drove the potential number of lots above what the sewer plant could have, could have taken. That didn't come to fruition, so, but it is affecting property owners at 2014, all.
Question, just to put it, it's hard to read exactly where it is. This is really to the left of 61. I mean, if I'm going by the record, it's on the right side of 61.
West of 61 and south of Mulberry Rock is our basic area we're talking about.
This would affect expansion at Georgian and probably for the new cost.
Yeah, anything new that would require rezoning at the Georgian, and this particular one is for that very reason. But it also would affect the commercial area in New Georgia, so that would remove that. Now, there are stipulations in the current moratorium that would exempt certain businesses and industrial uses anyway, but this cleans that up.
And I believe there's future plans for a 12-star emergency care in that area, too.
That's right. And we would assume they would pump over into this basin.
Okay. And that would help there. And anything you want to add to that? Would it put anybody out there just there now, or are they going to have to do something?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't change, doesn't change anything to any citizen that's living there now. They're totally unaffected. It has to do with development of existing. Now, the only, the only effect it would have is if you own property in that area, and you can't do anything with it until this is adjusted or that's the question.
Any other discussion? Number four, discuss action to adopt Resolution 14-16, adopting a new road naming policy. This is something Commissioner Graham brought to me a while back, and we've looked at it in studies, I'm going to talk about it.
Yeah, this actually lays out a procedure for naming and renaming roads. It's intended to provide guidelines, assist the process of naming a road, ensuring alignment of a road, naming county's programs and services, minimizes confusion, first responders, postal service, and it conforms and recognizes standards. It gives you a way, whether it be citizens initiated, department initiated, or commissioner initiated, gives you a process that you actually can go through to name or rename a road. Does not affect any of the previous, any of the existing roads, that kind of thing. Just a, a couple of things. One of the things, one of the changes is that road names shall not be more than 15 names, characters, 15 characters.
About 15 characters.
We can't be more than 15 characters. Only the person's last name, if you're naming a road after a person, only their last name. And also, roads cannot be named after a living person, is what's in this policy.
So if we want to name one, we got to kill them.
Yeah, no, name them, you got to kill them. That's right. It talks about duplications of names within, it talks about duplications of names within it. There are only allowed variations within a subdivision, whether it's, you know, court and that kind of thing. The process is that it goes to addressing first to confirm that it conforms and fits. Then after that, there's a process that's there, but it does allow an area for what they call honorary naming, similar to what we did or what the state actually did for Dr. Covington, and that is it allows a procedure to name bridges, intersections, roads, but it doesn't change the name of the road, similar to what 92 gives there for Dr. Covington.
Other things you pointed out, Toby, you won't be affecting any current road names?
Correct.
And this goes before the, if they submit a name?
If they, what the procedure is, and I worked with D O T on this, is if you want to change a name as a citizen or even a commissioner, then you go to address, addressing the department first to confirm that your proposed name conforms, that there's not already a town else for it somewhere.
They don't need to be.
But, I mean, yeah, town else could be, you know, but, but know where that it exists, that it fits into the thing, and as long as it's conform, addressing doesn't make a decision, then citizens can make an application, or commissioners can proceed when the name is reviewed by E911 to make sure that, you know, it's not a confusing name, or it's not going to create problems with responding and associating. Ultimately, all road name changes outside of realignment caused by a new road or a development being done, for instance, if somebody does PRD, they select those names and process. Outside of that, all road name changes will be moved in by the board commissioners.
Doesn't affect city roads, it doesn't affect state? Any other discussion?
Tommy sent this to us back weeks ago. It's time to look at this. I appreciate all your work and effort. You got to the part about the head degree, passed away. I just want everybody to know that I don't want road names. And I don't want you to go on one.
How long you got to be dead for?
Well, the chairman's already started the list. I'm not happy with what I see. Any other discussion on this? Thanks for your time. Number five, discuss action to adopt Resolution 14-17, second supplemental resolution of Pauling County, Georgia, relating to the issuance of Pauling County Airport Authority revenue bond, Pauling County Northwest Atlanta Airport Project Series 2014.
I'm bringing this information to you, but we have plenty of experts in the room that can give you a lot more, better information than I can. We have Bonnie House, who's in with her work, and Heather Kinsey with the underwriter, as the underwriter. And what this is, is back in October, we started a process for issuing airport bonds. We issued not to exceed a 3.6 million and then not to exceed a rate of 5.25. Those bonds were bid and sold, and then we had opposition at validation, so we went to the Superior Court, and we went to Court of Appeals, and they're announcing, type of court, and these cannot close until that is resolved. But the issuer that was, that offered us this bid at the time, had agreed to offer us a little bit increased rate, it would be at 2.35%.
Instead of 2.25.
Instead of 2.25 for 10 years. And unless, if you have any other questions.
And then you said that until the Supreme Court rules on the motion to reconsider, the bonds will not close.
Correct.
That's more legal than.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Right now, just so everyone's clear, I reported last meeting about the infirmance of United States' Decision of the Georgia Supreme Court, confirming the bonds. There is a procedure by which the party can ask the court to reconsider its decision. That procedure is ongoing, as we referred to earlier in the meeting today. Typically, the Georgia Supreme Court, in my appeals experience, will not let more than a few weeks pass by before it rules on a decision like that. So that's technically pending right now, but those bonds will not close unless the motion for reconsideration is denied.
Another question of the, when we assumed the contract for the tax weight widening at the airport, I know that our assumption was about 2.9, but we had contracts to, we've expended what about a million eight to $2 million as far as the county, not including what the airport paid.
That sounds correct. I don't have the exact, that does sound correct. I don't have the exact number in front of me to include the contract.
Okay, so in these bonds, the airport authority would then pay, pay general funds back for that money, and I'm assuming at some point we would have to give the contract back? That's just a question that just popped into my head, but at some point.
Yeah, if the bonds are closed, the funds will be there, be paid, those entities that paid for those construction costs that I heard during the time.
But now, we have the contract now, so I assume we would assign it back to them if, once they're cleared, they can work. They've done all they do to do what they had to do. Okay. And this money would be used to pay the IBA back, which I hope that they would ask for that back. Now, the other thing, and I know Ms. Barnett mentioned it earlier, but there is signed a contract with Propeller Investments, Propeller something out there, that requires them to pay the payments on these bonds until such time that FAA reimburses them, and also requires that they put $500,000 into an escrow account. In fact, it says that escrow account, only the airport authority has signature over that escrow account. You know, I would hope that Propeller would do it, I would hope that the, if Propeller doesn't, the airport authority reforces to do that contract. I recognize that as part of that contract, the line item was left blank as to how much the payment's worth, because it ended up, they still don't know how much the payment is until it closes, but that document will be substituted until they're at that point.
So if the bonds do get issued, then I assume we will be paid back what we spent, and then the IBA, the remaining part, will have to vote to put the contract back over to the airport authority, I assume, and the remaining part will be there. So I've got a question, but you may not be able to answer that question.
I was playing on it.
We, we took, when we voted to bring the contract back to us, we voted for up to 2.9. And so I assumed there was a reason for that, I think, because expenditures that they thought were going to happen, and I know we haven't spent 2.9. But the IBA had already loaned a million, which that equals 3.9. I know it's not spent, but I guess if we give the contract back to the airport authority, they'd pay us the 1.8, they'd pay the airport, they'd pay the IBA back the $1 million, that's 2.8. That's going to leave basically $800,000, but yet the two funds that we have going right now were 3.9, so I see a difference of $300,000 exactly. End up coming back to this board in any way, does something.
Yeah, because.
Somewhere those, those numbers are a little in place.
Where if you take 2.9 minus a million dollars, that's 1.9, which is about what we've spent, but there's certain, and then there's other areas that they can't do anything with. No, it's not 2.9 plus the million.
I believe the, I believe the law was 3.6.
Right. But the contract, we assumed the full amount, but only certain amounts were payable under it. And the full amount, I forget who it was, their contract was 2.9 million, because there's other things out there that aren't under that contract, such as electrical work, such as lighting, and things of that nature that are not. We don't have that part of the contract right there. Still another.
And it's not all completed because it's being held up. Okay. That answered my question.
Okay. Can I say, like I said, we have that expert here, if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. That's the conclusion of our regular business session, the executive session. The public participation, we have two people asking to speak, Mr. Jerry Colblyer, having hands of Pauling County, who will come forward. Colblyer, you have five minutes.
I'll take you as well. Hi. Good morning, and thank you for letting me speak. Beneath Jerry Colblyer, I volunteer for helping hands, probably the county's largest food pantry. Just to let you some know some statistics of what we have done in the past six months, we continue to grow over the years, and it's getting bigger every year. Over the past six months, like I said, we have helped 16,000 people with almost 300,000 pounds of food. And then that also, there have been about 9,000 pounds of Sunday items, laundry, so it's a big difference. How do you, why, you can't really wrap your hand around this, so if you keep that average of $3 a pound, that's $900,000 we gave out in six months. We are run, we have two paid employees, everybody else is volunteered, and we do all the running and everything else, collecting food, do food drives. We are helped by a lot of individuals in the county, clubs, organizations, businesses that donate to us so we can continue to build. We have got to the point where we need to expand our facilities, we have purchased some land, now the hard part is to start raising funds, to build a bigger building, make a venture that, and probably hang on to the one we've got. We're probably looking at about $500,000, $600,000 for the building. And our first fundraiser will be in August 15th at Rhodes Holly Dent Center, it'll be a supper and silent auction. I think then in November, Dr. Michael Lee, the dentist here in Dallas, is going to put on what they call a gobble waffle on Silver Comet Trail, so there'll be more information coming out on that. And then once we have all this building done, we hope we serve the community better by not just food, but maybe with clothing, appliances, furniture, whatever the community really needs, that they're in need of. So with that said, I'd like to thank all of you. I'll have flyers, things in the back, if you want to talk to me later, any questions?
Jerry, you're doing an amazing job. Do you have any other officers and cabinet heads you can recognize?
Officers, let's see, there's Ken Thicke, Ben, Carol Marber, Brendan Ferris, Tommy, and Reverend World, Johnny World. So I think that's it, I think.
What's the date of the dinner and auction again?
August 15th.
We'll try to get that, if you'll give us a flyer.
Yeah, I have a flyer back here with Mr. Marber.
And if you'll share it with Joey Martin, we'll get it on channel 23.
Okay.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
The next person asked to speak is Mr. Stephen Prue on the budget intention plan.
Thank you. Good news is I've limited to five minutes, though. I'm here on a couple of things that I've talked to, I think each of you guys about in the past. But first of all, I want to thank you for the veterans' park. I'm a veteran, and I appreciate you honoring veterans, those people that have the opportunity to serve with the potential of losing their life and perhaps the freedom of this country. Also, as someone that enjoys outdoor recreation and walking, and I'm up to about 20 or 25 miles on this park out here now.
On this one?
Uh huh. And it's convenient and it's great, and I just want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you all for the time you invest as commissioners, the money that you're willing to invest in the county, to have yourselves trained, to learn how to conduct meetings in order to learn how to borrow ideas from other organizations where you go to continue education. It's imperative that you borrow ideas, you don't have time to solve all those problems here. And that's incredibly important, and I thank you for your time and the willingness to invest a little expense money from the county to pay your way to go to these things. And also, the employees, I think was mentioned earlier about the Sheriff's Department, all of the money that you invest in training to have the very best employees, it protects their lives and it protects the citizens of this county. I'm also appreciative of the money and time that you put in over the years to invest in economic development. I understand, as you do, that if a business is coming to this county, they first look at schools, they look at healthcare, they look at water and sewage, and they look at transportation. Is the transportation dependable and fast? So they can get their employees and their, whatever they manufacture here in and out of the county to their customers in a timely fashion. So I appreciate that. I know not everyone agrees with that, but that's my opinion as a business person, 40 years and a lifelong citizen in this county. And I work with business people that understand that. Without new business, without new jobs in this county, very frankly, we will become an entitlement county like some others around the metro area have. And no one wants to live in an entitlement county. Business has got to supplement the tax revenue for people that live here. Homeowners can't pay the freight. And so I appreciate your investment. The main thing I wanted to talk to you about, and I know many of you are aware of this, is the coming crisis, and it's actually here now in pension plans. Governmental agencies throughout the country are holding up shop. They're literally filing bankruptcy as municipalities and public entities because they can't afford the promises they've made in defined pension plans. I think the solution for you to consider would be to go to a defined contribution plan for your new hires, not affecting any existing employees, because they've led their life around these pensions. Certainly not affecting the first responders. I believe that our military and your first responders here in this county ought to always have a defined benefit plan. That's another discussion for another day, but this is something you're going to have to address. I feel very strongly that the federal government and the state government are going to put more and more pressure on you through mandates. We see it in the Healthcare Act, we see it in a lot of things, executive orders, all of that trickles down to the counties and the cities and their responsibility. These are things that are out of your hands, but they're coming, and they're coming in a geometric manners very soon. I mean, y'all already see it, y'all understand exactly what I'm talking about. But as you get more pressure on you to do other things, then we'll lose services, and eventually, what most businesses do, and even government entities, is they have to even cut pension plans or even eliminate pension plans for existing employees. And I know that's not the intention here. And right now, you're in good shape, but I promise you that the coming economical situation as generated by lack of leadership, in my opinion, in Washington, is trickling down fast to you, here. Thank you. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of our regular session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second? Favor say aye?
Aye.
You are adjourned, thank you.